Oh, good. Oh, you're welcome. Thank you. What's your phone number? Thank you. That's what we understand.
Yeah. Ready? Click.
6:57.
So, got three minutes. No, okay. Those are small things. The time is now 7:03. I would like to call the council meeting to order at this time. First item on the agenda is call and roll call, please.
All councilors are present.
Thank you. Item number two is Pledge of Allegiance. May we all stand, please?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, special orders of the day and announcements. Three A, please.
We have a proclamation designating August 12th through August 18th, 2018, as Community Health Systems Week in Beloit.
Vice President Duncan.
We would like to present you with an official proclamation from the city of Beloit. You can come over a little closer. Whereas, Community Health Systems is a federally qualified health center operating two clinics in southern Wisconsin, with a medical and dental clinic at the Beloit Area Community Health Center and a medical clinic at the Janesville Community Health Center. And whereas CHS cares for more than 14,000 patients per year. And whereas Community Health Systems Incorporated mission statement is comprehensive care for our community. And whereas at Community Health Systems Incorporated, they believe no one should go without quality healthcare, which is why they operate a sliding fee scale for those without health insurance. No one will be denied access to services due to inability to pay. And whereas CHS is a firm believer in community outreach with programs such as Seal a Smile. Through this program and in collaboration with the school district of Beloit, the CHS Dental Clinic staff applied fluoride varnish and cavity preventing dental sealants on 2,021 children right at their schools. And whereas the full-service dental practice offers comprehensive dental care, including cleanings, fillings, crowns, extractions, root canals, partials, and dentures. And whereas CHS Medical Practice offers preventative screening and assessments, adult and pediatric healthcare, women's health, management of chronic illnesses, sports physicals, well-child exams, nutritional counseling, on-site diabetic education, and prescription drug assistance, among other medical services. Also offering comprehensive care for HIV-positive patients through a collaboration with UW-Wisconsin Hospitals and Clinics. And whereas patients have access to social workers, nationally certified interpreters, insurance coordinators, and other supporting services right at our clinic. And whereas Community Health Systems holds several community-wide events, including Back to School Night, where children can obtain school and sports physicals as well as backpacks with school supplies, trunk retreat, and cookies with Santa. And whereas across America, Community Health Centers offer affordable, high-quality healthcare to people regardless of their financial situation. And National Health Center Week is designated during August 12th through the 18th of 2018. Now, therefore, the city council, president of the city of Beloit, does hereby proclaim the week of August 12th through the 18th, 2018, as Community Health Systems Week in the city of Beloit, and calls upon citizens to recognize their contributions toward a healthy community. So, we thank you for your service.
Thank you so much.
Let me take my glasses off. Wait a minute. I'm sorry. Got to see. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for what you do for our community. We truly appreciate it.
I just wanted to recognize my staff for coming here to support us tonight. And thank you, council members, for this. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
And you know what? I think that we should recognize all of you. Can you please stand up? Thank you so much for what you're doing every day. It's very important, and we want to recognize you.
Thank you, item 3B, please.
We have a proclamation declaring August 7th, 2018, as National Night Out.
Vice President Duncan.
Can we have a representative from the Beloit Police Department, please? There you go, Dan. You snuck up on me.
I did.
Okay, yes. Whereas, the National Association of Town Watch is sponsoring a unique nationwide crime prevention and community safety program on August 7th of 2018, entitled Nationals Night Out. And whereas the 35th Annual National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Beloit to join forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting community policing and crime prevention efforts. And whereas the Beloit Police Department, Beloit Area Crime Stoppers, and the Beloit Fire Department play a vital role in collaborating with our community to reduce crime, fear, and disorder in Beloit, Wisconsin, and are supporting National Night Out locally. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of Beloit be aware of the importance of crime prevention and community policing programs, and the impact that their participation can have on creating and sustaining safe neighborhoods in Beloit. And whereas police-community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important themes of the National Night Out program. And whereas the city of Beloit has a longstanding tradition of gathering within our many diverse neighborhoods to celebrate and further law enforcement and community partnerships. Now, therefore, the city council president of the city of Beloit does hereby proclaim Tuesday, August 7th, 2018, as National Night Out in Beloit, and encourages residents to acknowledge the event with their neighbors by hosting block parties, cookouts, youth programs, and other such activities that strengthen and promote neighborhoods, spirit, and police-community partnerships. So, this is presented on the sixth day of August of 2018. Thank you.
We're very proud for this day tomorrow, and I'd like to invite everyone out to the Hairymore Pavilion down at Riverside Park. We'll have our National Night Out kickoff at 5:00 PM till 7:00 PM. So, please come join us. And from there, we'll be breaking out to go to over 24 events in the city. So, that really shows that the community's coming together and having these National Night Outs. So, thank you very much.
And one of the things that we wanted to say that a lot of times councilor and city staff go out to a lot of these events, but we want the public to know that we run in, we run out, because we want to hit as many of them as we can. So, don't think we're rude if we come and stay for five or 10 minutes and keep moving, but we want to let the public know that we greatly appreciate what they do. And over the years, we kind of all scoped out which is where's the food at, so we know exactly where to go first. So, you know, just a little hint there. So, but we greatly appreciate everything that everyone is doing in the community, because truly this makes an impact in Beloit. People getting out, getting to know each other. And if you don't do it this year, I encourage you to do one next year, because it's a great event. So, thank you for all your hard work as well.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you.
Item 3C, please. And before we read this, I'm going to ask that the entire committee who's here come forward for this presentation. It's going to be the swag communication, but I'll let the clerk read item 3C for the records, please.
We have a proclamation supporting the school supply giveaway sponsored by Saved with Amazing Grace Swag Committee.
Hey, at this time, I would ask that the entire committee that's here this evening, please step forward. And while they're coming, I want to just thank you and all organizations that are doing school supply drives for our students. Me and my grandmother were talking today, and we were saying how when we were coming up, a lot of this didn't take place. So, you had parents going out, making it tough times to get school supplies and stuff for their kids. So, when you have organizations such as this taking it upon themselves to get backpacks and school supplies, we just wanted to take a moment to thank them for all that they do in Lighthouse Church for leading the way. But I think Harriet's the spokesperson there, so once we...
Where is she at?
Harriet, I like you better, so you know. I always told him, I've got a chance to get him back for all the stuff he do. And I told him, when I get you back, it's going to be in public, so.
Now, I would like to present you this proclam... To each of you, this proclamation from the city of Beloit. Whereas, the school supply giveaway was founded by Lighthouse Fellowship Church in 2009 and expanded to a partnership with other churches in 2015. And whereas Saved with Amazing Grace, which is SWAG, is a committee comprised of a number of area churches, agencies, businesses, and community leaders who have come together to assist in meeting the needs of less fortunate children in our community to help with their educational endeavors. And whereas SWAG volunteers work to provide children with a good start to each new school year by providing school supplies, haircuts, salon appointments, clean fun, food, and entertainment. And whereas it is the SWAG organization's desire to promote the development of strong character, high self-esteem, good attitudes, and sense of responsibility and citizenship among our community's youth through motivational messages, inspirational singing, and positive interactions with the Beloit Police Department. And whereas SWAG sponsors a number of collection events on various dates and locations, with the main school supply giveaway event scheduled for noon on August 18th of 2018 at 12:00 PM at Telfer Park, and is provided completely free of cost to attendees. And whereas average attendance at each SWAG event has grown substantially over the years and is now trending upward of 800 attendees comprised of families with school-aged children, high school, and college students. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Beloit City Council encourages our greater Beloit community to support the school supply giveaway with tax-deductible donations, and we apply the chair and committee members for their commitment to meeting the needs of students in our community. So, on this date, the sixth day of August of 2018, we congratulate you with this official proclamation. Thank you.
Go ahead. Press your luck.
President Levy. Council members. I'd only just say thank you for the support and collaborating together with us on this. It has definitely been our group's desire to bring the community together with us. Many individuals kind of do their own thing, and we've been really trying to show a strong support of especially many different churches, different denominations, different organizations, to come together to let the children know in this community that we love and appreciate them, and that it's the love of Christ that compels us to do that. So, we're very excited, and the work is all on the committee. So, big thanks to all of them, and we'll continue to keep it growing.
And what we wanted to say is, on behalf of the city manager and the entire city council of Beloit, we wanted to donate some backpacks and school supplies for your event. This is not... This is just a start. But what we would like for you to do, if you could provide information as to if anyone wants to make donations or backpacks, where can they send that stuff to? Because we have the media here, and then this is on TV. So, maybe an opportunity for other people in the city who also may want to make donations. So, we would need the information.
We set a goal this year to service 1,000 children. We serviced 700-plus last year. The calls that I have been receiving and the despair that I've been hearing, the need is great. So, we are trusting that we are going to reach our 1,000 goal. If you would like to donate, we are doing a Pack the Squad on Wednesday at Shopko. And you just go into Shopko or wherever you want to purchase and purchase supplies, and we're going to fill up one of those beautiful squad cars. And then...
The big ones.
Yes. And then if you want to donate money, you can send a check to Lighthouse Fellowship Church, SWAG in Your Memo line. And the address is 112 Merrill Street, Beloit, Wisconsin, 53511. Together, we can help our children become better citizens. And we think with this kickstart that we're well on our way.
Thank you. And before you leave, I think we're going to get a picture of the group. Sarah's going to take a picture of the group as well.
Mr. President.
Thank you. Thank you all so much. Thank you.
Owen wants to be a part of the picture, right?
And then when we...
The councilor should have came. We should have got one of the councilors. Because all the councilors gave back.
Because we got... She got us. And I'll open this floor up for any counselor who has a remark.
Thank you all so much. This is a wonderful service you're providing for our community. Before you all step away from the mic, is there a way for people who want to donate to access the information you just gave online or to give through an online site?
I have established a Facebook donation thing, something new that popped up on my feed, and I was like, thank you, Jesus. So, that's there. I'm sharing it on my page, and I'm sharing it publicly. We are posting the event flyer on all the help groups that I'm familiar with, people helping people, people of Rock County helping people, those types of sites. It's been advertised in the paper. So, if you look, if you search SWAG, I'm sure you can find where to hook up with us. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Item four.
I have one, then, Kevin. Thank you for making me miss working at Staples. I didn't think it was possible.
It's one of the things I do best, you know. I mean... And for those that in the SWAG organization, as you see, once you get your presentation, even though we would love for you to stay here for the next three hours while we have this meeting, you can definitely leave at this time if you want to. Don't feel obligated to stay for the entire meeting, so. And then I'll say this, and then she can yell at me tomorrow when I say, "See you later, ain't lost." Well, item four, public hearings that are in on this evening. Item five is public comments. We reached a point on the agenda where citizens may come forward to speak. You are limited to three minutes. I will not cut you off, but I'll give you a friendly reminder that you are approaching that three-minute mark. We ask you to refrain from any personal attack on staff, on counselors, or anyone else. If we seem to go down that road, I would ask you to sit down immediately. We try to... We want to run a professional meeting, so we do ask you to keep your comments brief, professional.
...notifications and some of those issues. I find just how important it is, not only for them to be professional, but to also be compassionate. In this case, everybody that I dealt with really was both, but it's something that you have to stay on top of. It's easy to get jaded a little bit. In this case, they weren't, and I was very appreciative of it. The last thing that really got hammered home in that situation there was I needed some information that was beyond the basics. I had to set up a military-style funeral, some of those honors. And that's not something that the sheriff's office typically deals with, but with our honor guard, we were able to make those connections, and we were able to get the help that we needed, and I appreciated that. Sometimes I've been criticized during my run here because I'm focused on some of these issues like drug addiction, mental illness, and homelessness. And they say, "Well, that's not really law enforcement's issue." But I think that's exactly what law enforcement's issue should be. I think we need to address some of these issues to try and bring down our crime rates, try and bring down our incarceration rate. I know I'm probably getting very close to my three minutes. So, that is really why it is that I'm running for sheriff. I really hope that I can get your support on August 14th and again on November 6th. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Matthew Finnegan.
Matt Finnegan, 2212 Noelview Drive. I'm just here speaking in favor of item 8A. We're asking to get our... Make it so we can build front porches in our neighborhood. We've got a very friendly neighborhood, and I was quite surprised when I went to try to put a front porch on that our setback requirements were different, and this was the answer to do so. So, hopefully you guys will be in support of that.
Thanks. Thank you. Alice Blue and Mark Miller.
I'm Alice Blue. He's Mark Miller. We are with Badger Spirits. We're located at 2621 Prairie Avenue. We're addressing the issue of the S&amp;D drive-through. We are a full-service liquor store. We sell wine, beer, liquor, tobacco, lottery, and snack items. We employ four part-time people and three full-time. In 2006, when we were planning our store, I came in to talk to the city planning commission, and I was told, because we were building a new building, there would be no drive-through. So, okay, no drive-through. Then about three, four years ago, there was going to be a store located at The Hardee's, which is in Shopko Plaza, which was going to do a kind of convenience liquor store drive-through. And they were told they could not have a drive-through, so it did not come to fruition. Because we were denied a drive-through, and now there's this other store that wants to do a drive-through, which is less than a block from my current store, I feel that would put us at a disadvantage. And I would like to see them not come in, so. The other concern we have is there's an alley behind our store, Prairie Avenue, and then there's an alley, and then there's... I don't know the name of the street. But that alley is becoming a roadway, and adding a store with a drive-through, an additional retail outlet, will make that even more of a road rather than the alley it was supposed to be. So, Mark, do you have anything to add?
Really?
Okay.
Okay.
So, we're asking for your consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Norvain Pleasant?
I am, as you said, Norvain Pleasant. I lived at this address, 1428. October will be 50 years. I've checked from the 1300 block of Yates to Switch Dragon. The whole area needs roadwork, complete roadwork. Nothing's been done for 50 years except patchwork. The curbing's all the way. Not a resident building where there's a complete curb. All of it's falling away. And I'd like something done. I mean, the city come by every five or six years, do your sidewalk. Okay, I want the city to do their bit. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I saw where our DBW director was taking information down, so thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone wishing... Anyone else wishing to speak under public comments this evening? If so, step up, state your name and address for the record, please.
Billy's Zone 311 St. Lawrence Avenue. And I do a lot of events in the area. We did the Peace in the Streets event last year. Kevin, I know you were there. You spoke. I believe you were there. A few other people were there. You were there, yeah. We also did the benefit dinner for the landess who passed in the car accident. But this year, well, this summer, we're trying to do the Beloit Family Reunion. And our planning staff's kind of been kind of slow-moving, so I just wanted to make sure, or get some guidance on, make sure we can stay in the same court with you guys like we did last year.
Okay.
It's a really simple idea this year, like a family reunion event just for like everybody in Beloit, though not just a specific family. You can get the custom shirts made, like with the last name on the back of it. SAC races, kind of like a field day.
Okay.
SAC races, tug-of-war, limbo lines, just real basic. I don't want to do like... Like last year was kind of... I don't want to say over the top, because it was fun, but it was real hectic. So, this year is real basic. I just wanted to make sure I could stay on the same court with you guys. Just kind of...
If I can have you, Sarah, would you be willing to get his information? So, we can just... And that way, that would be the individual that you want to get information to, because then she can make sure the council and entire city organization gets that information. So, if you would get with her before you leave and exchange information, and she'll keep us in the loop.
Okay. We've got a date and a location that we were looking at.
Okay, what's the date?
September 16th, at Lisa Park.
Okay.
And I know we're going to have like some parking restrictions, but...
Okay.
But I'll talk with her and go over some more.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comments this evening? Anyone else wishing to speak under public comments this evening? Third and final call. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comments this evening? Seeing none, I will close that portion of the agenda and move to item six, consent agenda, please.
All items listed under the consent agenda, considered routine will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member still requests, in which event the item will be removed from the general order of business and considered at this point on the agenda.
Is there any council who would like anything removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, the consent agenda will consist of items 6A through 6J. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Preschel, second by Duncan. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, consent agenda passes. Seven, 7A, please.
Consideration of Resolution 2018-143 for Approval: Denial of 2017/19 Applicants for Alcohol Beverage Operator-Bartender Licenses for the period of July 11th through 31st. And what you have before you this meeting is 13 applications for approval, four applications for denial, and the appeal time for appealing their denials has passed.
Is there a motion? Motion by Forebeck. Is there a second? Second by Blakely. Any questions or comments? Are those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Passes 7-0. Item eight, ordinances, please.
8A is a consideration of ordinance number 3624, amending the zoning district map to change the zoning district classification from R1A Single Family Residential District to R1B Single Family Residential District for 26 properties on the 2100 and 2200 block of Noelview Drive.
Christiansen, please.
You held a public hearing on this?
You held a public hearing on this at your last meeting. Basically what Mr. Finnegan said during the public comments, which is that the request is to rezone to a zoning classification, which would allow for a smaller setback in the front, and planning commission recommends approval.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Duncan. Is there a second, second by Forbeck? Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, in opposed. Passes 7-0. Item nine, are appointments? There are none. Item 10, council activities and upcoming events. Council Forbeck, please.
May be tough to believe, but that was less crowded. So, so it's great to see so many amazing events going on downtown in Beloit, and I think it's definitely amazing to have a city like this, have a downtown like that. And just like everybody else has been saying, go vote. You can't complain if you don't vote, and you should not skip any election, no matter how small it may seem, or maybe you don't like every candidate, you got to get out and vote.
Council Blakely.
I want to echo what Counselor Forbeck said about the Department of Public Works annual park tour. Laura Williamson was great in leading that tour. I learned and had a heck of a lot of fun at the same time, so thank you very much. I was also able to attend last week's information session, the reconstruction plan for Prairie Avenue. So I want to thank Mike Flush and Jason Dupuy and the engineering team that's helping pull those plans together. We had good input from citizens in the area. Not all favorite. Most I've heard from do, but discussion on that will continue to go on in the public realm. So thank you very much, and thanks for the citizens who came out and let their voices be heard. And I also, I'm echoing, echoing, echoing here. I want to encourage everybody in the city to go out and vote in the Wisconsin partisan primary next Tuesday, August 14th. Those elections are very important, and they're actually very major for considering all the politics going on in our nation, in our, and in our state. So please vote. If you have any questions, you can call the city clerk's office, thank you very much Lori, at 608-364-6681. Thanks.
Vice President Duncan.
I'll just add in that I also had a chance to go on the annual parks tour. Laura and the whole staff did a really great job at that. And then also, I had a chance to attend the Rock County Breakfast, and I also went to the 21st Century Diversity Training with our Beloit Fire Chief Liggett. That was really wonderful. We had an opportunity to really put emphasis on our strategic plan to enhance our diversity efforts here in the city. So I feel that that's a great step in the right direction, and looking forward to getting more perspectives from our team on that. And then also, I would like to just encourage citizens to join one of our committees and to go on our website. That's always important to get involved. Let's roll our sleeves up and everybody try to work together to make it even, to make Beloit an even better place to live. And then also, to just say in closing, just be careful out there. There are a lot of the projects going on, and I know people get very impatient. I'm probably one of those people, but we have to realize that it's important to be safe out there, and I know it's a little, it's a little stressful right now, but you can already see the impact that it's making in some of the areas. They look much better already, so I'm looking forward for what's to come. But I just want to say to the public to please be patient, and at the end of the day, it's going to be beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a friendly reminder to my colleagues, when we have workshops through the city, or any place in the community, it's very important that we make staff aware if we're going to attend, because they have to post those meetings in a certain amount of timeframe. So I wanted to apologize to the chief that for the diversity training, there was a little hiccup there. We had several people that wanted to go, and we found out kind of a couple days before, it was too many of us was ready to go, so some of us had to pull out. So I think it's very important that if you're planning on going to these events, let staff know. You can either let the city clerk know, or the city manager, and we'll make sure that, they'll keep, they'll tally and keep how many are going. So if they have to public, publish it, we're meeting the guidelines by the law that we have to. So with that, I have no comments. Item 12, reports?
11, please.
Excuse me, there's nothing. No city manager's report?
Well, there is. There is. So for those of you who are fond of watching city council meetings, you know how much our council president loves public acknowledgement of celebrations and events, and I would be remiss if I did not publicly acknowledge the council president's birthday that's coming up tomorrow, and I was just reminded. So, happy birthday, Mr. President Levy.
Thank you very much. Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, and I know who shared that information, so we'll be talking to that individual. Can't let everybody go on vacation. No, thank you, everyone. It's a blessing to have another birthday. So once again, it's coming at National Night Out, so I'm glad to see we changed the name of my birthday party to the National Night Out. I really appreciate the entire city coming together to celebrate my birthday. You just don't know how much it makes me feel proud to even have the kickoff at Riverside in over 24 parties. I, I'm just touched beyond belief. I can't believe this.
And it didn't cost you a dime.
Didn't cost me a dime. That's the best party ever. The whole, the whole country is celebrating. What a, what a wonderful guy I must be. I'm humbled. I'm humbled.
Mr. President, I think you've reached your time limit. Thank you, but happy birthday, Kevin.
Thank you. I think Vice President Duncan had one more thing to say, so.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that literacy is very important in our community. It starts with our little ones. Like I said at the last meeting, they're like little sponges, and they're soaking everything in. So we want to be able to reach our children at least 15 minutes each night. That's very, very, very crucial. And so what I'm asking is for the community to please join us on August 9, Thursday, at Culvers, between 4 and 8, and all the proceeds raised during that, during that time will go towards the Literacy for Life project. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Just to be on the tail end of what Counselor Duncan said, that is in honor, it is Regina Duncan Day, Thursday, August 9, an annual event, and we thank her for all that she gives to the community. She focuses on, forget you're here now. She focuses on a very deserving cause each year. So please get out to Culvers Thursday evening, help celebrate Regina Duncan's commitment to the community, and show your own.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none, city attorney, I think. Okay, just 12, 12A, please.
The city council may convene in closed sessions pursuant to Section 19851E Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public businesses whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require closed sessions, namely to discuss the negotiation of a collective bargaining agreement with employees in the Transit Division of the Department of Public Works. The city council may thereafter reconvene into open session for action.
Is there a motion to go to close? Motion by Jacobson, second by Duncan. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, in opposed. Hearing none, we are in closed session.
Remember you called me three, did you? Many years ago. I just forgot about it. Oh, really? It was a scooter at home, which is actually quite easy. Good. I never put it through the app.
That won't be put off.
I mean, I know it's there, but...
At least you don't wind up...
That was nice.
Over a dozen, sure.
Before us is a Resolution 2018-145 approving and ratifying a collective bargaining agreement between the City of Beloit and the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, Local 643 Transit, AFL-CIO for the term January 1 of 2018 through December 31 of 2020.
Their motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Preschel, second by Jacobson. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed, hearing none, that is approved. 12B, please.
The City Council may adjourn into closed session pursuant to 1985 sub 1G Wisconsin statutes for the purpose of conferring with legal counsel for the governmental body who is rendering oral or written advice concerning strategy to be adopted by the body with respect to litigation in which it is likely to become involved and pursuant to 1985 1E for the purposes of deliberating or negotiating and purchasing of public properties and investing in public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require the closed session. Namely, to discuss the Town of Beloit incorporation petition and possibly boundary agreement, the City Council may thereafter reconvene into open session for action.
Their motion go to close? Motion by Duncan, is there a second? Second by Preschel, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we're in close.
Yeah, probably.
And we're in closed session.
Newspaper today.
Very classy.
I'm trying to keep up with you, Nina.
It's too late for prickles, even. Man, it's too late for prickles. Oh, I've gotta fix that. Oh, man. Gotta fix that. Prickles, I gotta get us some prickles. We haven't either. Well, there's three on play. Run really fast, we can get there. We'll have to go really fast. Call ahead.
I was half ordering one the other day, but I didn't. I know I ordered one.
Careful, take your time.
Beth, please, can you hurry up?
That's so mean.
She is. I mean, some of us wanna go home.
We are in open session.
We're in open session, Madam Clerk.
Resolution 2018-147 is requesting the town of Beloit to jointly petition the incorporation review board to temporarily stay in corporation proceedings in order to finalize a cooperative boundary agreement with the city of Beloit.
There are motion.
So moved.
Motion by Precios, second by Foreback, although in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, passes seven zero. And I would like to announce to the public and people in the forum that copies of the resolution will be placed on the cart on your way out. You can get a copy of the resolution. Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Precios, second by Duncan. All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we're opposed. We're adjourned. Thank you.